All the October 14th, 2025 meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any proposed changes to the agenda? No. If nobody else does, I do have a proposed change, which is to move number eight consideration of the September 22nd meeting up to number three, which is right after the approval of this agenda. It's never made sense to me that we approve old meetings and it's at the end of the meeting. I think we should just get it done as a ministerial task at the beginning. So I'll make that proposal.
Is it a motion?
Yeah, for a motion, I guess.
Okay, I can make a motion to move agenda item number eight to number three.
And I will second that.
All those favor?
Aye.
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 Any ayes? No? Okay. So that motion was just to move the agenda item. So I'll do this without ask for unanimous consent unless there's any other proposed changes. I'd ask for unanimous consent to approve the agenda. You already know comments, the agenda is approved as amended. So comments from the chair. I'm not the chair, so I won't make any comments. Well, I'm sorry. I apologize. We just moved the approval of September 22nd meetings to the next agenda item. So let's consider the September 22nd meeting minutes. And does anybody have any proposed corrections or changes to the meeting minutes?
Did we not have any public comment? I believe we didn't. So. I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I don't believe we did.
Yeah, no.
I know Steve wasn't in attendance, so I think that probably relates towards no public comment.
But I will move to approve the agenda from September 22nd, 2025.
Have a second.
Do you need me to say?
I just need a second.
Oh, I wasn't there, so but I guess I can.
I'll second.
Thanks, John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Nope. Minutes are approved. Next is comments from the chair. Again, I'm not the chair, so I won't make any comments at this point. Next item on the agenda is general business. This is comments from the public, but anything not on the agenda. Is there anybody here in attendance that would like to speak to anything at the meeting that's not on the agenda listed? Nope.
There are two people online.
Oh, and we have some folks online, just to see if anybody online has anything. You can either speak up or use the hand raise function. Okay, I don't see anything from anybody. So we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the election of chair and vice chair. So Arian Kissam was the chair. She attended her last meeting last month and she is no longer here with us. So and I am neither the chair nor the vice chair. I'm just speak as acting as one. So I guess I'll just open it up for discussion amongst the group if there's any. The word escapes me.
Nomination.
Nomination. See, there we go, nominations for chair and or vice chair.
I think we, well, I'll just say that I think we came to some conclusion for chair last time. Did we, did we discuss vice chair? And Maria has been vice chair? Is that and is Maria staying on as vice chair? I don't recall us discussing that last time.
I don't think we discussed it as a full group. We just spoke to the.
Maria is now on.
I'd be happy to.
Hi, Maria. Are you, are you
making nominations, but.
Willing and able to, to stay on as a vice chair?
No, we don't have you.
No, no sound, even though you're unmuted.
Yeah, I don't know. Yes, you would be president, vice chair. There we go.
Excellent. Thank you.
I guess if we needed a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Can I, can I make a full motion for nomination for chair and vice chair? Or shall I do them? Should we do them separately?
I think given where we are, both would probably be fine.
Then I will make a motion for our chair to be Aaron and our vice chair to be Maria for, yeah, the upcoming tenure.
I'll second that.
Great. All those in favor of having myself as chair and Maria as continuing on as vice chairs? Please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. We now have a new chair and continuing vice chair. And I humbly accept this position that no one else wants. So. And I will just say I'll, I will make a couple of comments. Just it's been, working with, with Arian was really great. I thought she did a very, very good job of sort of helping create a foster an environment where a lot of voices were heard and we were able to have really good, robust discussions about the issues that we were dealing with. And so I, I really will try to take her lead and continue to see if we can welcome, I'll do my best to help, you know, welcome and encourage those really robust discussions that I think have served us really well so far. I guess the only other thing I would say is that I will where I may differ going forward from other past chairs is that I want to try to run as efficient a meeting as possible. And if we can get out of here before 7:30, I will do everything in my power to get us out of here before 7:30 whenever we can. So I'll try to speak less and, and just you know, carry on the work as efficiently as we can. So, thanks. The next item on the agenda is to continue, continue work on new permanent zoning amendments, which is a review of, I guess we'll start with the review of chapter 220, the overlay zoning districts. And I think I'll hand it over to Mike and Meredith to sort of speak to those things. And I guess the other thing that but is there, as part of this review, as you give it to us, I think it's always helpful, at least to me, before you start to give these presentations, is to let us know if there's any, any sort of specific feedback or decision that you want to hear from us as you're giving this presentation. It's always good to know if there's some, something actionable that you have in mind. I have a feeling the answer is no at this point, but.
Yeah, no, so we don't, there's no, nothing at this point. This is, so for everybody's background, the planning commission has started to undertake a zoning review. And so the first thing, other than Aaron and maybe Gabe was a part of some of them. Most of the planning commission was not involved in the big zoning update that took place up through 2018 and then the design review regulations that were amended in about 2020-ish. So a lot of new board members. And so what we're trying to do is to go through the city plan or go through the city plan, go through the zoning and really kind of explain what all the pieces are and how they all fit together. Because we need to make some functional amendments to the regulations to help them run more efficiently. And everybody kind of needs to know how all these pieces work in a 300-page document. So we're trying to go through beginning to end, so the commissioners have an understanding. And also we'll highlight areas where we have made notes of things that should change, whether it's things from the public that we've heard or committees, or if you're on the DRC, if there are things that were like, you know, we always get hung up on this piece. And if we had some clarity of that, that would make our jobs easier. And that's whether it's DRC, DRB and, and understanding the background. So you know, big picture, that's what we're doing. And tonight we're talking about the design review regulations. And so trying to make sure that the public and the planning commission has a good understanding of what is the design review overlay district? Why does it exist? What are we trying to accomplish? What are the pieces that they need to know? So when they hear a public comment that says this is stopping development, they've got some background that says, well, actually, we've talked to the DRC and the DRB and the Historic Preservation Commission, and this is what they have expressed. And so that's a little bit of why we're having this conversation is to understand it and then to come up with ideas of how we can make things better and to fix those things. And I'm going to turn it over to Meredith to kind of give an explanation of what are the details of the design review district? Just because she's far more familiar with it. But again, just kind of an overview. And then we can either take comments or questions or input from the boards and questions from the planning commission.
Okay. So for everybody who's on, oh, so yeah, Meredith Crandall, zoning administrator. And I'm going to share my screen because it has some of the mapping on it. I'm actually going to pull up the city plan because I think that that one is the easiest one to see the design review district aspects and how those work in with everything else. So if people do have detail questions, I'm happy to go into this. I'm going to try and keep this as sort of high level as possible at this stage. Um, yeah, yep. This is just me mostly talking off my head. So the design review district overlay is the only overlay district that the city has adopted so far. This is a layer of regulations that.
Claire, you're showing the historic.
I know.
Okay.
That work with and are sort of an addendum to the standard zoning regulations. So if someone is in the design review overlay district, they have to comply with all the regular design, you know, zoning regulation requirements that apply. And they also have to meet the pertinent design review regulations. What I'm showing on the map right now is the, the orange outline is the National Register Historic District for the city of Montpelier. And then the, the pink that's in there at the moment is the designated downtown. You can see how these don't exactly match each other, but they're, they have sort of a similar context focused on the downtown. I'm going to scroll down and you're going to get layered in the design review district. So now the design review district is this darker pink area. I'm going to zoom in a little bit. And so it overlays all of this downtown area here now. Stretches out partway here, out Berry Street and parts of Stonecruders Way. It also goes up to National Life. And there's pockets of it around certain areas that the city determined were unique enough or had enough of this kind of mixed development or special buildings where they wanted to layer that in is also having the design review overlay district. So area around Vermont College of Fine Arts campus area. And then there's also another pocket. Hold on. Where'd my other pocket go? Oh, I'm thinking of something else. But we've got, and it stretches up here behind the Capitol Building. There is this green area here. This is an exclusion zone. So it's within the general bounds of the design review area, you know, design review overlay district. But the state has jurisdiction on design review aspects in this block. It's a, it's by state statute. Design review doesn't apply there. Zoning does in general with, with a lot of caveats, but not design review. So that's the sort of big picture area map. Most of these areas that are covered are commercial areas or mixed use areas, just generally speaking, as well as a lot of it is the historic structures and historic downtown. The regulations themselves are very detailed at this point. There are categories of regulations and I think you can probably turn, I'm not going to scroll through them because it's just too much text. And you can turn the lights on. Thanks, Mike. There are some very general standards that apply to almost any project that happens in the design review overlay district. Then there are some that apply only if it's a project involving a historic structure. Then there are some that only apply to new development in the designer view overlay. There's also some very specific things for, say, signs, specific standards to signs, no matter what kind of building they're on. But they're really broken out. So when somebody comes to the planning department with a project, we look if it's in the design review overlay district, we then filter down and guide them towards the very specific provisions that apply to their project. There are certain items that since the, the most recent version of these was adopted, there are certain items that can be administratively approved, even though they're in the designer view overlay district and have something that triggers that designer view, some exterior change. But those are pretty limited for administrative review. All most projects that come in and have an exterior change on a structure or on a parcel that triggers designer view needs to go to the designer view committee. Because most of these things are not black and white items. And so there's, you know, committee, they take a look at this, the, the matter and then look at those very specific standards that come into play. How is that going to switch? No, it's not. And I can, if you want, I can just give you one example of a standard. So say for you know, this is something that applies to all projects. That there's one that says that sorry, I need to make this smaller. Location and appearance of utilities, mechanical equipment, trash, trash, storage and fencing needs to be cited to minimize adverse visual impact or adequately and appropriately screened from public view. So really sort of basic thing for those kinds of items in the designer view district. And that comes into play whether it's a, a big project or a little project. So if somebody's coming in with, with some new trash location, we require that it be screened basically. And then if, say, there's, you know, a historic structure, there's going to be more of a look as to the specific details on that building. What kind of, you know, framing do they have around their windows, things like that? That's when those kind of details really come into play. Where they want things to match. If it's a new structure, that's not quite as much of an issue there. It's a lot more open and, and free form as to what's, what, what, what fits those design review standards. But there's a lot of detail in there and I'm happy to discuss that if you want. And yes, designer view is exterior only. Not getting into the inside there. They, they provide their comments, their recommendations, either to myself, if it's an administrative permit or to the development review board, if it's an application that needs to go through their review.
At what point would something go through both the DRC and the DRB? So if it goes through the DRC and they, they recommend, then it then goes to the DRB or, or or are there other factors that send it to both?
Um, so there has to be an aspect to the project that triggers that development review board review. So either it's a, it's changes to a building that are associated with the conditional use. So it has to go to the board. There, it's a brand new big building that's triggered major site plan review. And so then, and, and most of the time this has happened in my time here, like over seven years now. If the design review committee has made a recommendation and recommendation that's strict enough of saying, this is how you need to comply with one of these requirements. Once it gets to the development review board, most of the time, the development review board is going to just, just accept that. There have been, there's been one appeal of a designer view recommendation on a sign that went to the development review board for review in my time here. And the development review board actually like stepped back and, and overwrote what the designer view committee recommended. But usually that, that doesn't come into play. Usually in these designer view committee meetings, when I, I've been here, it's a discussion. And there's a, there's a form that the designer view committee chair fills out. If they've made a recommendation, it's on there. And the applicants can sign off that they agree with the recommendation and then it just moves forward. That's usually what happens. And a lot of the times there aren't recommendations. There's options. Designer review committee makes suggestions that aren't binding. They're just saying, hey, we'd be happy to see either X or Y, your choice.
And please excuse my ignorance. So when it goes to DRC and let's say there are recommendations, then what is the, what is the process? I'm just thinking about, is it still within sort of administrative approval?
Um, if it's an administrative permit, yeah, most of them are. So they make recommendations and they're at that point making those recommendations to me as the zoning administrator as to what to layer in as a condition on the approval. And that's one of the only times an administrative permit would have conditions on it that aren't just, hey, you have to comply with X provision. You know, more of a reminder so that people are aware of it. Because sometimes people forget that aspect. But no, that's, it's a recommendation to me as to what to layer in as a condition.
Okay. Hand up a ring.
Just wanted to crank up the volume a little bit. On that, I can't hear everything you're saying.
Yeah.
I, I can, I can definitely speak up some more. Um, again, another ignorant question. I apologize.
I've been doing this.
This is new to me.
Okay. Yeah, that's why we're, that's why I invited all of them.
Excellent. So I'm, I'm curious about the, then like any sort of public appeal. Is that at a DRB level? Does that happen at a, a design review level as well or no?
No, so could be they're administrative, they don't authorize the permit. So they send their recommendations. If it's administrative, right, they would send their recommendations to me. I would issue the permit. So there's appealing the designer view committee is a little funky. There's two options. Before I issue the permit, there's actually in the design review regulation standards, there's a sort of in-house appeal option where they can go straight up to the development review board and say, we disagree with the designer view committee's recommendations. We want the DRB to weigh in. So that is sort of a sub-appeal that's separate from the standard appeal process that would be after I issued a permit.
Okay.
So that's been worked in there because during the discussions of how this all works, they didn't want people to have to go through and like pay the recording fees for my permit and everything, when we could know right at that designer view committee meeting that there's disagreement. So that if, if the disagreement is understood right away, they can then just come to me and say, hey, we want to get on the next development review board agenda that's available. And, and ask them to weigh in on what the designer view committee has said. And at that point, the, the recommendation form, the meeting minutes are all evidence of what the designer view committee has recommended to the DRB. And sometimes designer view committee members might actually come to that meeting as well. So that's one option. The other option is I issued the permit with the conditions and then it gets appealed. And that would, you know, unless somebody was at the committee meeting, that would probably be the avenue for a neighbor that disagreed with the recommendations. Because the designer view committee meetings, the agendas get posted, but that's not a matter that like all the abutting property owners get.
Sure.
Mail notices or anything like that.
Got it.
I have a question. If somebody wants to demolish a building in the overlay district, how much say does the DRC have in saying they can't?
Um, they, they don't really. They're, so the design review standards, the 2201 is their jurisdiction. So when I have had people submit applications in the designer view overlay district for demo, it goes through the designer view committee. But really what they're looking at is the post-demo plan. Right, the post-demolition plan, whether it's grassing something over or it's, you know, most of the ones I have had in the designer view overlay district, because it is mostly the core of the downtown, there has already been a plan in place for what's, what's happening next. And I think most of those have also been historic structures. So there's just this higher tier review for those anyway. So there's, there have been plans. So what the designer view committee looks at is what's your new plan? What's, what's the new thing going in there instead? But they don't weigh in on whether or not the building gets demolished. That's a development review board decision if it's historic. And if it's not historic and hasn't otherwise triggered DRB review, then that's administrative.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Meredith?
I don't know. I think I just want to think out loud for a second. I don't really have a, a question yet, but when I was kind of reading through this chapter 220 stuff, what I had in mind was the feasibility of infill in this like overlay district, you know? And I'm kind of noticing that portions of Berlin Street are in the overlay district. And you know, that feels like there's been a lot of great conversions of, you know, kind of adding to the housing market while still complying with the, the overlay district. Is there any feedback? So I guess my assumption is that all of this effort that's gone into the overlay zoning district is what has preserved the, the charm, the appeal, the beauty of downtown Montpelier that makes it what it is. Does that ever kind of butt up against development infill type of stuff? Are they, are they at, at odds? You know, kind of reading it, I see like we need to preserve the historic nature of the buildings. And, you know, if we add another building, it, I mean, my understanding is, you know, it, it's differentiated from the old, but respect, but shall respect and be compatible with the, you know, features of, of the old building. So anyways, I'm just kind of seeing like, trying to think, oh, if I wanted to add some structures in this overlay district, there's a lot of things to comply with. And how is that received? And especially if there's other cities in, in Vermont that also have maybe something similar to this overlay district. And they are having these infills or development with success. Is there some lesson learned that we can figure out? Is this zoning overlay district an undue obstacle, like a hurdle that we can sort of discuss? And that's what we're kind of here to do is identify any hurdles? Or is it working really well and it's working as designed? Yeah.
So you guys get with me addressing this real quick and then the, the historic preservation commission and design review committee members might have something to weigh in. So one, in my seven years here, we haven't had a whole lot of applications for new buildings in the design review overlay district. Those that have come forward have been approved, whether they got built or not. And the, and we know that the regulations themselves are pretty technical. And that's why one of the supplements to that in a way to help understand that are the design review guidelines. I'm going to just give you an example. So these are, this is something that was developed by the historic preservation commission, Montpelier's historic preservation commission with guidance and input from the design review committee. So these are people who are, you know, invested in a lot of this. And in the guidelines, there is discussion and illustrated information. Trying to show what is meant by, here's one, designing new buildings to be compatible in height with existing buildings in the neighborhood. And there's images here. So yes, sorry. New buildings in existing neighborhoods. So here's an example of a new multi-story corner building, right? With a stepped down side here so that this section of the building is closer in height to an existing structure, right? They don't, they don't match. It's talking about, you know, consideration, making sure that the structure as a whole is not massively dominating everything next to it. You have these adjustments to scale in parts of the building. You know, next to it is, you know, this one, where just this whole big structure is really significantly taller than this. This probably is something you wouldn't necessarily want to see as much because it is completely overwhelming. But maybe if it had had sort of a step down a little bit more, it might've been a little closer to what they were looking at. You know, this is one that's an example of something that is, you know, potentially acceptable, right? This new building, completely new building right next to a church, features an elevator tower echoing the steeple tower. This was an example right down in White River Junction. So there's, there's ways to do it. And there's a bunch of illustrated examples in these guidelines that we can point people to. And this is also, this guideline document is also there for design review committee members to use as a resource. If they're confused as to what a standard is meant to result in or, or, or how to apply it. These aren't regulations. These aren't rules, but they're a backup and an educational tool.
Yeah, that was just going to be my quick question to follow up. These guidelines, if I remember correctly, so I'm, you might've just answered this, but is this meant to be for the committee members or for? Okay.
Both. It's for applicants when they're developing projects as well as for design review committee members when they are looking at a project and trying to determine in this instance, what, what could compatible, like what does compatible look like? What does, what does respectful of existing structures look like? What are some examples if I don't see in my head what, what that could mean?
And I don't, I don't know if any of the committee members that are here tonight, if they can, if you could speak to whether or not the committee tends to rely on these guidelines and if so, to what extent. I remember when, I remember when these were drafted and this was a few years ago and I, I thought, I think the committee, I can say like the planning commission as a whole thought there was really helpful. I'm just curious.
We, we haven't had any big projects that came up. So I'm just gonna.
Yeah, I was just gonna say like, yeah, how, how effective they've been in, in guiding the committee's decisions and recommendations.
We haven't had big projects since then. It, it's been really frustrating. But yeah, we, we haven't had them.
I'm trying to think about what has been developed in, in this area in the past decade, let's say. And what comes to mind is maybe the, there's a six unit across from the co-op. That was done maybe a while ago now.
Yeah, that, that would have been under old, simple, much simpler design review regulations that were, that really had no specifics to them. I mean, because that's what was, it was like three pages when I came here. And honestly, any permits I issued using those regulations terrified me because I was like, I'm, I'm issuing this permit, but there's nothing to back up what the design review committee actually recommended.
So that, that district, the district, how long has the district been around? Do we know?
1976.
A long time.
Yeah, the district's been around a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, one microphone through the other mic or Eric, sorry.
I have more to say, but I really want to answer your question and I think I can do that with an example. The both of the stark preservation commission and design review offer a preliminary informal review, which is, I think, really helpful to people because they get, they get to, you know, get some idea what's going to happen. And then there are people on committee that often make good suggestions. But example of how the process works and fits into the guidelines is myself and another member of the stark preservation commission met with the new owner of the Ascension Baptist Church on Elm Street, which they're proposing a housing development there. And I think he's planning on 20 units. Is that right?
I haven't seen a formal proposal.
And we had an informal meeting with him and the, the, there's a surprising amount remaining of the historic house as part of the streetscape there. And we talked, we talked with the developer, had prior discussion with the developer and developer was very interested in the idea and is going to look at it of kind of saving the front of the facade of the house to preserve the streetscape. So I think the process, and just in today that went through the, now how, how does that fit into the guidelines? There's a number of different ways it does. But in the end, any guidelines or statutes reside on human judgment. And everybody has their own idea. But I, I, I think the idea of having this informal approach before people actually avoids just turning a project down or approving a project that isn't quite ready yet. And it also avoids a lot of costs on the developer's part. Because they don't have to pay an architect or anybody to design something.
Just very quickly, in your experience, how often do applicants engage in that informal consultation process?
Not real often.
Okay.
I mean, it's not, not like an everyday thing, but it, it happened for this project. I can't remember the last one or what it was exactly. But it's just a kind of a service that both myself, I'm chair of the star preservation commission. And Steve, who was the chair of the design review committee, both liked that idea of kind of helping people through a project rather than just, you know, sliming it when it gets there.
And I guess to answer Tim's question, I mean, the, two of the biggest projects that would come to mind, the transit center project and the approval of the parking garage. I mean, approval of a parking garage goes through design review and gets approved. So it's, there, there's certainly elements that we get to go through, that we, that applicants have to go through. But at, at the end, it certainly doesn't stop projects and, you know, very different projects. I mean, transit center is not a historic looking building, but that's not what it's supposed to be. But those did, those, some of those were under the old rules, but they still kind of came under.
I just had another good example.
Okay.
The addition for the memory care unit on the back of the Gary home.
Yep.
On Main Street, that's a historic structure, has a modern addition on the back, went through design review, got approved with just some, you know, suggestions on types of finishes on the outside and some, some comments here and there and, you know, screening of equipment that was on the roof, things like that. But that got, that got approved under all the modern regulations, the floodplain, the zoning and the design review within the zoning.
Those examples are really helpful, kind of piecing it together. The words on the page to, you know, the examples of it actually being executed. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I think my, maybe my one concern, which is similar to the development review board as well. And just looking at the zoning regulations, when I see pieces of, pieces of the zoning regulations that pop out to me as, well, that's of somebody's opinion, there's subjectivity that's built into these zoning regulations. And so from my perspective, as just a someone in Montpelier who wants to see new housing development, I sort of like cross, cross my fingers and hope that the folks on the design review committee have a similar mindset. Because they will be looking at the website for the guidelines. They'll be looking at the zoning regulations. And then making a somewhat personal subjective decision when it comes to some of these issues. And I'll say just for, for example, like the, the, the rhythm, there's the mention of rhythm within our zoning regulations. For me, that's a very subjective decision to make. Although maybe the guidelines are, are give, get very good examples of what rhythm is.
And while Meredith is looking up her piece, I'll just go and say, so, you know, big picture. It's kind of goes for everybody. I mean, you, you had objective sets of rules and you have subjective sets of rules. And if everything were, were objective, we would have all administrative permits and not need any, any panels. You know, the big theory of the regulations is that you have the opportunity to have some subjective rules and then you have a board of reasonable persons. And it, of course, requires that we have reasonable persons on, on our boards. And so far, my ten, tenure here has been that we've had very reasonable people on those boards and made good decisions. So. But in order to have flexibility, you need to have a certain amount of subjectivity to build that flexibility and you need to, to, to give a little bit and, and bring it to a board and let a board of folks look at it and say, yeah, that's, that's okay. But the, in the past, you know, Meredith generously said there were three pages of rules under the old rules. There are actually like five sentences. The rest of it was just the process. So the rules were literally like one sentence long. It's like, you know, you can't do this. You know, it shall be compatible with the scenic quality or something like that. And, and so they were, and really all the interpretation without any guidelines. And the courts said, you can't do that. So a decision called JAM golf pretty much said towns can't do that anymore. You have to have more guidelines. So we were forced into going into adding, all right, what does it mean to, to talk about protecting the character of the area? What does it mean to have, protect scenic quality? What, you know, just, we've got to put some meat on the bones, not enough to make it objective, but enough so that way a, a reasonable person who's an applicant can make a decision as to whether or not it appears they would meet or not meet that requirement. And so that's kind of the, what's happened over time is you could get away with that in the past with, you know, five sentences. Now we've got a design review guideline and 15 pages of regulations. But really, in the end, what the hope is, is that there's enough there for a board to make a, a a decision that they could point to and say, no, you don't meet this requirement or yes, you meet all these requirements. And the requirement enough that that's there for an applicant to be able to look and say, I know what I need to do to, to get an approval.
You've got to be it. Sorry. You've got to be a microphone and introduce yourself because the minutes will be taken from somebody listening to the recording.
Martha Smersky, I'm one of the members of DRC. I think it's important to follow up what Mike was just saying and also speaks to your question about subjectivity. There is some subjectivity in this, but remember that we're dealing with a board. And each of those members has a different idea and can explain that idea so that you're not getting one person's unilateral charge of what that is.
Yeah.
And I think that's a really important piece.
Great.
And I'm sorry, how many members are on the committee?
So it's five regular seats, two alternates. So you need three for a quorum.
Occasionally people get, anytime you have a board like that, you have people who might get disqualified for conflicts of interest being nearby. So you've always have extra ones. Look, I see Gabe's hand is up too. And then we'll have Steve.
Yeah. Hi, I, I, this is Gabe Lajanasa. I'm a member of the planning commission and I, I'm sorry, I joined a little bit late. I'm traveling in a different time zone, but I, I could have missed, but have we had a discussion about the, like the map of where the design review district is? I think if you go to most communities that have as significant a historic district as we have, you're going to see very similar kinds of guidelines, right? I mean, we need to, we want to maintain that character and whatnot. But to me, there's a, there is a good question about how far does that design review district extend? Can it be shrunk somewhat? And I don't know if I missed that conversation, you know, the logic for why it is where it is today or, anyway, I apologize if I missed that.
I can answer a little bit of the history question because I had to put this together for a lawsuit that never happened. So the original design review district and under state law, there are two different buckets you can be in. You can be a design review overlay district or you can be a historic design review district. And we are not actually a historic design review district. We are a design review overlay district. So we actually chose not to be a historic district, but at the same time, we regulate historic within that. So it's a little bit of a little confusion, but we are actually just a design review overlay. And the initial intent was really to focus in 1970s was really to focus just on our downtown, Main Street, State Street. And then over time, you know, 1980s, there were like three or four amendments where things were added, like out to Redstone and then out and then down Berry Street a little bit. And then, so different areas were added on over time, including a discussion probably in the, in the early nineties to add in national life and that whole area of the Western Gateway. And really it was to reflect, you know, can we make sure that as areas are developed and built out, that they're going to have to go through a design review process. Now, we didn't end up having much development up at National Life, but that was the intent was that we want this area covered so that way it, it could be reviewed. But it is true that it is, I don't know if there's necessarily a logic at this point that you could point to that would say, why is national life in design review, but X is not. You know, there, there are plenty of areas we could go through and say, you know, why not through 302, why not River Street? There are a lot of areas we could make that same argument that was made for national life and the Western Gateway, why not the Eastern Gateway? So there, I don't, you know, getting to Gabe's point, I don't know if there is a logic. Certainly we could make it smaller and there was a discussion early in the process of redeveloping these rules in maybe 2019 where we talked about, should we make design review district match the historic district boundary? And just focus on that. And that was, that we had a conversation with that, with historic preservation to decide, do we just shrink it down? And it wouldn't necessarily just shrink it down because it actually would make it bigger. A lot of the historic district is not covered, but.
It would cover, if you did matched it with the national register historic district boundaries, you would actually pull in a whole bunch of residential neighborhoods.
And that was, that was the reason why most of the design review overlay district focuses on commercial or predominantly commercial properties. Because there's an added set of costs and requirements to meet these requirements. And, you know, the question is, is that fair to put that burden on a, on a residential, single family property owner? And so the decision has been in the past, you certainly can, as, as the city, we have the authority to, but we don't, we haven't in the past. And it's primarily because it's, if it's primarily residential, especially single family or duplexes, small residential, that it wouldn't be appropriate. They don't have access to grants. Commercial properties are downtown is in the designated downtown. They qualify for historic tax credits. They qualify for a lot of things. So we might say you're required to do this, but you have access to grants to help cover some of those costs.
Okay. So just, just so I can make sure I understand, originally state and main, and then over time, because the city wanted to review more, we added more, but it doesn't have to be that way. We could go back to a state and main. We could go back to a state and main if we wanted to, right? We could do that, and that would still meet all the requirements of the designated downtown and all those things.
The only requirement is we have to cover all the properties in the designated downtown, which does go down Berry Street and does include some other properties. So that is a requirement of the designated downtown program that you must have a design, either a Historic Design Review or a Design Overlay District. So we can't eliminate it in those areas.
Thanks, Mike.
And this is kind of reminding me of that kiddie pool discussion that we had earlier. I mean, that was in relation to residential, you know, this hypothetical situation of residential property in a Design Review Overlay and this, you know, all of these considerations that we have with the facade of structures and making sure that it's, everything is compliant with the charm and vibe of, of the downtown district. So anyways, it's, yeah, it's very interesting. It's helpful to hear people's perspectives of why things are regulated as explicitly as they are. And if anybody has heard of like any residential properties that have been caught up in the Design Review Overlay District, you know, I think Mike just brought a good example of, okay, yeah, maybe they have to comply with something and they don't have the same access to grants. But yeah, has this negatively impacted residential properties?
I mean, there, there are plenty of residential properties that this does apply to. I mean, the district goes to hits the properties up and around the State House, for example. I, I can't see if they would, if they negatively impact, I mean, to, to, they go through the Design Review Committee, so yes, there's, what, if it's just a design review, that's the only reason the permit's being triggered? And it's not for building code compliance? It's, it is $130 for the Design Review Committee and the permit recording fee? And they get the guidance. I, I don't, I don't know, you know, there's, there's a step they have to go through. There is a hoop. So that would potentially be negative. Have I had somebody say that that means they can't do their project? I haven't had that happen. Okay. So that's, that's my perspective on it. I'm sure there's others.
No, it's helpful to have, yeah, you know, like, okay, yes, I've had, I remember 10 people that this happened to, or like, no, I don't remember.
I haven't had anybody had that happen and then not go through the process because they had to go through the Design Review Committee.
Yeah, well, that's great. Thanks.
And then folks that would like to speak, yeah?
Hi, my name's Steve Everett, and I'm on the Design Review Committee. I think the two key words are, one, we're advisory, and number two, guidelines. Guidelines are just that, guidelines. And I think that even though there's some of the decisions are subjective, that we have a diverse group on our committee. We have an architect, attorney, people with deep experience in historic preservation. We have a contractor and somebody who's actually done some development. And when we look at a project, again, we use the guidelines and sometimes it's a challenge because you're dealing with people with new technology who want to put solar panels on a 200-year-old building, or somebody who wants to mount compressors or heat pumps, and I'm going to go, the list goes on. So the trick is to try to upgrade an historic property. Most people who want historic properties want to preserve them. So they're very interested in doing what they can to make in addition or a change compatible, so it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. And as far as cost goes, based on the group's experience and some of the recommendations, I've actually had two people thank me on behalf of the whole group for saving, one guy saved $20,000 on a project, significant project, because of some recommendations that were made. And we've had other people who've had similarly experienced. I don't know that there's been anybody who had any significant increase in cost for the project. The only issue with increasing cost is inflation. Cost of building materials and labor is in the last five, six years is just incredible. And I think that's what slows down more development than anything else. Trying to find a project that you can afford to do, and if it's an investment, is there going to be enough of a return to even cover it?
Yeah.
So again, there is the challenge to build something that's reasonably priced so that it makes sense. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
This is like a, and subjective question, but do you, do you, or anybody else here, see any or come across any sort of tensions between housing and new, new housing development or building more housing in Montpelier and historic preservation? It's kind of a big wide.
Same question. That's a good question.
I'd have to answer that project by project.
Yeah.
There's, I don't think there's a general statement you could make that could answer that question.
Yeah. And then I, I'm also curious if you would have any recommendations to us in terms of any changes to geography or otherwise regulations, or if it feels like like things are in a good, good space in terms of the, in terms of the overlay district and design review for moving forward with housing, housing developments in these, in this area?
Can I cut you off real quick? I don't want to get ahead of you. I just, I just want to note that the agenda has like two subparts to this discussion. The first is the review, and then there's the second discussion of areas to consider changing.
Excellent.
And I don't, I just want to make sure that, I want to finish the review of the chapter and get that done. Your question's great, because I just want to get things muddled. So I was just going to ask if, if there's any more questions that we might have for Meredith or anybody else, so that we get a, we have a good grasp on chapter 220.
Sean has his hand up, and I think Gabe's hand might still be up from before.
All right.
Well, I'm sorry, I'll put it down.
My, I, I do have one question. How long does it usually take somebody to navigate a project through Design Review? Like, does it take a month? Does it take, does it add two months? Three months? How, how long?
Yep. So the Design Review Committee meets, as long as there's applications, they meet twice a month, just like the Development Review Board, two Mondays a month. And as long as I have the application for the Design Review Committee, about 10 days before that meeting, and the meeting isn't completely full, which these days doesn't happen, they get on that meeting. So, you know, there's like a 10-day pause from the time they get me what I consider a complete application, till they go before that Design Review Committee meeting, get their input, as long as there aren't, you know, changes or additional information that they need to provide to me. After that Design Review Committee meeting, once I, once that meeting happens, like the next day, we get moving on finishing processing their zoning permit. And it could be that their permit is issued the day after the meeting for the zoning. There might be some things they have to pull together for a building permit, if a building permit applies, but it, it really doesn't hold things up much at all. I mean, we're talking maybe a 10-day pause in, in how everything goes together, because I have to get the Design Review Committee's recommendations before I do any kind of next steps. It's, it's not long at all. Occasionally, the Design Review Committee will ask an applicant to come back to their next meeting because there's something that they dug in on their application and there's something missing, some detail. They want to see some, something, you know, maybe tweaked a little bit for the design. But that doesn't happen that often.
Okay, thanks.
I don't have any other questions about them.
Hi, Eric.
I'm Eric Gilbertson. I've been chair of the Historic Preservation Commission for 20-plus years. But to answer your question, the Avishon Building was one of the big houses that sat vacant for years, and that is largely a historic preservation project. It is funded by money from the Preservation Trust of Vermont, by the Housing Conservation Board. I don't know if they were able to take the tax credits, because that's for-profit organizations. But there is a 20% tax credit available for somebody who wants to do, do it, but they have to meet preservation standards, the Secretary of Interior standards to do that. One of the things I wanted to do tonight, a little perspective about historic preservation and Design Review in Montpelier. And I think it really kind of began with the proposed demolition of the Pavilion Building in 1972. And people realized that this was an important part of the street scape in Montpelier, which was a very advanced idea in 1972. And they objected to that, and what the architect came back with, Bob Burley came back with, was the idea of reconstructing the building. And I've been in historic preservation for a long time, and that's probably the best reconstruction I've ever seen. I wouldn't ever impose those requirements on people. But they even cast the bricks in a size to match the original, so that, and they reused parts of the wooden and parts of the stone trim. So that's, I, I think, kind of an important thing. The other thing I want to do, a little story I wanted to tell was, in, I believe in 1993, I hosted a board meeting for the National Conference of State Historic Preservation Officers in Montpelier. And these are people that were in historic preservation and working with downtowns all over the country, and there were probably 40 people that came. I told them, you're not going to need your car in Montpelier. We'll pick you up at the airport. And they all came back and parked their cars for three days. But it was the first meeting hosted with the Pavilion, Fred, Fred Bichera took over the Pavilion Building. But, you know, here's a group of professionals that were blown away by Montpelier, by the downtown, by the neighborhoods. And I think, you know, if you drive through Montpelier in the last few days and see all the people on the street, you know, I think it's something that is pretty hard to find in the country, and it's an intact downtown. And a number of different projects have contributed to that, and it's been historic preservation money. I'm, I'm obviously an advocate for historic preservation. I worked for the state for 30 years and then for the Preservation Trust for another 15. But the, I think, and maybe Mike and Meredith can help me with this, but I think the standards and the guidelines, why the Planning Commission asked the Historic Preservation Commission to draft up those, I'm not quite clear on yet. But I don't have to be, but I think the quality of the applications has improved because of that, because people can go to the guy, those guidelines, and that's really a tutorial in historic preservation. And, and people can use that that aren't necessarily doing, you know, don't require to do it. It's a good guideline for design and paint colors, examples. And so it's useful to the broader residential communities. And I think it helps people make good applications. And I think with signs, I think Steve would agree with me that the sign makers have really figured out how to fit signs in Montpelier that meet the guidelines and acknowledge the historic character of the downtown.
Absolutely.
And so it, you know, the review process, and, you know, in the neighborhoods in Montpelier, people are no longer just painting their houses white or brown or whatever. They're painting, they're respecting the architectural features of the building. And I don't necessarily, I don't think that paint colors need to be reviewed. I have one exception to that. I, I do have a recommendation in that regard. And it's, and probably guess it's a TD Bank North Building, which is now a giant corporate logo, and it's the Garrick colors. There used to be a gas station there, but the design of the building, you know, had something, they painted over the brick that was there that actually tied, you know, the building kind of in a design wise with the downtown. And what my recommendation would be that commercial properties be subject to the color review. I don't think we need it in the residential neighborhood. Seems, seems, it seemed to be working out pretty well. People look at a nice house and say, hey, I want to do my house that way. And so there's a lot of good examples. And the preservation, interest in preservation in Montpelier has been around the first the Montpelier workbook that was done in the mid 70s. It guided, you know, some good guidelines in there. But the ones that are most recently done, Brandy Saxton was contracted with, with a CLT grant, and it's part of a grant program that the city of Montpelier is a certified local government. So, and that we got refunded the, the guidelines, and most recently we funded the Historic Preservation Scoping Study, which I'd suggest is a fascinating read, if nothing else. It, the goal was to kind of identify historic resources that weren't on the register, that weren't listed, so that the Preservation Commission could have some kind of guidelines to move forward with any nominations or whatever. But there's fascinating historic pictures and maps of Montpelier in there. It's, it's a long read. I think it's what, 67 pages long? But at least my page here did that, went way over what she was paid in that kind of work. And it provides a good plan for historic preservation. And kind of interesting, in a state where I worked, historic preservation was in the Development Agency. Wait a minute. But historic preservation is really not about pickling buildings and saying you can't change buildings. And if you look at the tax credits in the Secretary of Interior's standards, it's about developing historic resources, and I think the Avishon Building is a good example of that. One would hope the post office will be.
Right.
Housing, and I think, you know, we've had some kind of informal discussions about that. And there's a, there's a good write-up about why it's significant architecture. David Coleman, that he's now, he used to be at the State Office. He's now heading the Historic Preservation Program at UVM. But I think that there's a lot of compromises that could be made in that building in terms of structure. It could save the facade. It's rather distinctive facade, whether you like it or not. It's distinctive, and it is historic, so. And I'm, I'm happy to ask any, answer any questions you have. I sit on Design Review as well.
So. This is super helpful.
Eric, did you want to just comment on, just real briefly, the, the rules could be, our Design Review rules could have been based on, like, there's rehabilitation, and there are a number of levels of parks, and we chose one. We didn't chose, chose the dump it in a camper and leave it there forever. We, we.
A set of standards for restoration.
Yeah, it was the restoration standards.
Which are very rigid.
Yeah.
You know, if you're restoring a building, you're restoring it. It has to be exactly the same. And then the standards, what I think you're talking about, Mike, is standards for. And then the standards, what I think you're talking about, Mike, is standards for rehabilitation. And that allows some flexibility in judgment to meet the standards. And one of the things I was, I've been doing regulatory stuff for a long time. And one of the things, I don't think you can write regulations where eventually human judgment isn't involved. Regulations would not be three pages long, they'd be three hundred pages long if you tried to cover every situation. So you're always going to have the committees, whether it's the Design Review or Historic Preservation Commissioner, or the DRB, that are going to make a judgment on that, and that's, otherwise it just wouldn't work. And I think that the guidelines and the standards now are very understandable, and they're really based on national standards that have been around for a long, the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation Project, so. There's lots of information, backup information, which is all referred to with a click in the in the guidelines. And thanks a lot for inviting us.
Thanks for coming.
I have a meeting, I haven't been sitting off for a long time.
So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that, you know, there are various levels of those standards, and we chose the rehabilitation standards very consciously and specifically, because it has the flexibility built in. It also provides the ability for someone who's coming in from away. So if you happen to be a Burlington architect and you come in, Meredith can go through and say, oh, if your building is this, you know, we, our rules generally follow the historic preservation rehabilitation standards. And they'll know what that means and what that's going to require. So it, by basing it on the National Park Service criteria, it helps to allow other people from other places, you know, architects coming in from other places, to really have an idea of what this is going to require if they happen to be working on a historic building.
And in the spectrum of that sort of regulatory regime, from one being the restoration standards, which are very rigid, to I don't know what the other end of the spectrum is, where do the rehabilitation standards fall in that spectrum? Do we? Do we now? I'm just, just trying to get a sense of.
Bob, you might, I don't know if Bob has the best way.
I mean, this, I'll just, I'll just say this is all really helpful, and I'm just.
I'm Bob McCullough, and I'm also a member of the Preservation Commission. Rehabilitation is probably the most liberal of standards. Rehabilitation is more strict. Rehabilitation means that an old building needs to be adapted to a new use in order to survive. Buildings that don't have an economic use don't stand for very long. And so rehabilitation is intended, or it means that the building is going to be changed, converted to a new use. That's the basic heart of the rehabilitation standard. Let's come back to your comment on the subjectivity and words. You use the word rhythm. It sounds counterintuitive, but the words that are in the guidelines that were drafted very carefully are intended to minimize as much as possible subjectivity. An example of a very subjective guideline would be a guideline that says a new building shall be compatible with the old building. What does compatibility mean? We don't know. But if we say that compatibility shall be measured by considering rhythm of fenestration, patterns of street frontage, roof height, roof shape, those add clear guideline or clear measuring sticks that help us winnow out as much of the subjectivity as we can. So. Okay, that's, that's why the guidelines that Montpelier has adopted are so detailed. There was an effort to, and again, this sounds counterintuitive, the more detailed they are, the more structure is given, is given to the process for making decisions.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I think that's a, that's discussion, a really good segue into moving into the subsection B of the agenda item, which is a discussion on areas to consider changing. And I think it sounds like we're at that point in the discussion, so. Tim, I know you had a question before. I don't know if you want to just repeat it, or if you feel like it was addressed. I don't even remember what.
I had two, I have two questions, and I think that all this discussion has sort of maybe helped to answer that first one, which was about the, any, any sort of tensions between housing, housing development and historic preservation. And I, my, my guess is that there, like, could be potentially some tension, but that generally we haven't experienced that. I think the example of the Avishan Building is a really good one, where the second and third floors, I believe it was, stayed, were empty for many, many years. They are, they have now been developed into, into housing. So that's not a tension that appears to, from my perspective, to not be a tension at all. That historic preservation and new housing development can go hand in hand. That's sort of my summary of that first part. And then my second question was, I think, what we're getting into next, if there are recommendations from folks that are here in terms of any changes in terms of geography or zoning regulations when it comes to the overlay district? Yeah, I think that's within our jurisdiction, right? Both the geography and the overlay district specs within the zoning regulations.
You can probably tell I'm not shy of things. But I, I think that the overlay district map should be reviewed every once in a while. I was looking at it just getting ready for this meeting, and I kind of wondered why all that area of national life should be in it as a design review. National Life has since completely re-faced their building and done that. And if that's, if that's in sign review, shows the jail's call. Just to jump in on something. I don't necessarily advocate for that.
Sure.
But I think reviewing the district, do we want to, you know, our court, do we want to? One example would be, you know, looking at the corridors that come into town. And, you know, Elm Street is a pretty active corridor coming into town. It's really nice historic buildings. Meadow is up in Elm Street. You know, is that a possibility that there should be design review rule on Elm Street? But I don't necessarily think that, that's something that every slophony that map should be reviewed. Because it really is a benefit to Montpelier to have designer review. So, thank you. Yeah, I did want to say something. That Meredith might have been, that's great helps. To me, as the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, developing these guidelines, statutes. It's really nice to work with people like that.
Excellent.
I think one of my questions or thoughts, I didn't see the word solar panels get brought up in these regulations. Maybe I missed it, but yeah, kind of curious. If we're talking about the facade, I know that solar panels were mentioned as potentially kind of interrupting the historical facade. I'm thinking also about, like, EV car charging ports, things like that. I mean, that's not talked about in here, but thinking about residential structures and maybe this potential tension of trying to make clean energy more accessible to residential development in these design review overlay districts, but also coming up against some limitations. So I don't know if that's something discussed. Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, so, so, quick reminder, design review is everything outside, on the outside. So not just the facade, which in zoning speak, in designer view speak, is the front part of the building or the parts of the building that face the street. So it's everything on the outside, including on the roof. And, you know, new fences, new exterior like structures, things like that can all come into designer view. And, yeah, the solar panels on a roof, it comes in under new, like, utilities or new things being put on a roof, if it's not otherwise just exempt from zoning altogether. There are lots of categories of solar installations that are just exempt from zoning, period, which means they never get to the design review aspect. If they do come in, I mean, we had a project come before design review just a few meetings ago, where it was somebody putting new solar panels on, I think it was a historic structure on the roof on a home. And there were just, you know, questions about, you know, how they were angled, you know, and it wasn't, I don't think there were any tweaks, you know, there were some questions about it, but there were no changes made. The only changes that I remember being made were actually because of fire code. The fire department needed to have them moved away from the edges of the roof so they could actually get ladders up there. So, you know, those are the things that come in. If, yes, if there's a new solar carport, that's going to go through design review, but that's because it's a new carport.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I was thinking a solar carport, I was thinking, you know, just like residential EV chargers that are.
Those are now exempt. Okay, from, I think we, from zoning altogether. If it's associated with a parking space, we're not, those, you know, if it's an exterior charger, the, that's going to be more of a building permit issue and a safety issue.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I mean, it sounds like solar panels and the EV stuff is a moot point when it comes to what we're talking about.
And a lot of the utility items, if they're on side or rear elevations of a house, it's just administrative design review. So I look and say, are you sticking it right in the middle of some really gorgeous, unique decorative trim? If you're not doing that, then it gets approved as long as it's fine with the building permit.
Is it, does heat pumps also kind of fit into the utility type of thing?
Okay, yeah, we approve those all the time. And, you know, we say, hey, can you just stick it on the side or the rear? And if that works, then there you go.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So I actually have a question for you, Meredith, which is, you know, since we have moved, since the current regime where there is, we have moved towards like administrative, since you're the administrative officer, you're handling the bulk of these now, I'm just, I'm just curious, like, just a broad thirty thousand foot overview. Like, do you find that the current, the current state of play with, in terms of like handling those, handling it administratively, is that a success generally? Do you find, like, where's the greatest efficiencies that you've seen in terms of having that process as opposed to the old DRB process? And along with that is, have you found any sort of, sort of kind of inefficiencies or places for improvement within the current system? I mean, it's, I get the sense that it is a, it is a vast improvement, both in terms of just the administration of these permits generally and for developers as well, but I just want to get your sense of.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't here before there was administrative design review, period. Right? So, so there was a time where anything that went through the designer, everything that was in design review had to go through the design review committee. And anything that went to the design review committee then had to go to the development review board to get backed off on a consent agenda. So that was a ridiculously slow process, and it just added reams of administrative work just to create the agendas and the packets. So luckily that was killed off before it started. But even since, since I started, more things have become administrative. And, and it's, yeah, I mean, I think it's a lot quicker. You know, we haven't, there are fewer things on the design review committee agendas. I think the last couple of years especially, it's not that there are fewer projects, it's that there's more things that are approved administratively. And so the design review committee has, you know, two, maybe three things per agenda instead of five or six, and trying to fit that in in, in an hour and a half. So it's, I think the efficiencies have definitely got, gone up.
And then on the flip side, is there any, just in terms of, when you process all these applications, so it's.
I mean, there's, there's a zoning assistant, so really, you know, the really simple checkboxes are the zoning assistant items. But yeah, that's a hard one for me to, to, because I'm still kind of in the thick of it with us, with the, the, you know, administrative subdivision and administrative, more administrative site plan reviews coming in. I don't know if I have enough of, I don't know if I step back enough to look and see more things.
Yeah, no, I.
Sorry.
No, I'm just, I'm, I get, it's hard to separate the forest from the trees a lot of the time.
Yeah, and there's, there's places where I've been, been in it enough to be able to do that, and I don't know if I can step out of it enough to, to bring up more efficiencies, right?
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And I guess I would just reach out to those of you who are, you know, members of the, of the committee and whatnot. If, I'll have the same question, which is, you know, now that a lot of this is handled administratively within the city staff, you know, do you find that, are there changes that you wish there was, that, were there changes to that process that you think would, that would prompt greater involvement from the committee that you think would be helpful? I'm just trying to get a sense of, like, what's working with the current system, like procedurally?
One of our goals, when we looked at statutes and the guidelines, is to make as clear as possible kind of administrative changes that can be made. Saves everybody work and time and saves applicants money. I think that's worked pretty well on. I haven't seen anything happen. And we have a good administrator, maybe if we had a had a good administrative, this couldn't be, it worked so well there as well. I think those kind of exceptions just make the process so much simpler. Sign review meets twice a month. So that means, you know, two weeks delay and answer to a question that might be very simple.
But I think we'll also look at, and I think Eric pointed this out, you know, make sure we keep an eye out for, for either project that have happened that we kind of look at and say, hmm, the color of the TD North Building, you know, that's, that's one where it gives us an opportunity to say, you know, how many other bad projects or bad outcomes have we had? And those can sometimes show where we might need to adjust our rules, but also the developers have obviously been in to talk to us about projects that have not happened as a result of regulations. I haven't heard too many of comments of design review rules where developers have said that. We've obviously heard a lot about the site plan process and the subdivision process and appeals and certain design or certain, certain dimensional requirements that could be adjusted to improve. But I haven't heard a lot, but, you know, certainly we should take a look at the color requirements when we get there to see whether that's something we want to take a look at. Because I've, I've heard not just from Eric, but from members of the public that were like aghast at the color selection. And that's, you know, that's worth it. I used to say, it would be great to go and name regulations after the reason why they're there. So that way, you know, these people are like, why do we have this? Well, that's because of the, you know, the TD Bank North color requirement that was put in place in 2025. And they can be immortalized in our regulations in that way. And the poor Domino's pizza sign was actually an error on. But, yes.
Sorry to bring up this.
Yeah, bring up painful, painful reminders of. But yes, those are always good opportunities to look at. Um, but yes, those are always good opportunities to look at, uh, you know, can we look out there and say, these are things that we wish hadn't happened? And if we had the correct review, maybe we could have made a difference in that. And some cases you can, if somebody wants to thumb their nose at the system, they certainly, there's only so much we can do.
Go, go ahead.
Technically, I'm not staffing this. So just a, just sort of a reminder about paint color in the TD North building. So right now paint color is not regulated. Right? As long as your building has already been painted previously, you can repaint it whatever color you want under the regulations. Um, the only reason paint color came up before design review committee for that TD Bank building is because they requested painting over unpainted brick. Right? Which if you use the wrong kind of paint, if you, if you don't do it the right way, can actually degrade the brick and cause a lot of problems. Same with like if you're doing over stone, other, other unpainted surfaces. And so because we don't regulate color, that was my guidance to the committee that they could decide whether or not TD Bank could paint it. But the color really wasn't part of the, one of the things I could put as a condition. Um, and they did give some, some, you know, thoughts on color, but I couldn't put that down as a condition. And so it's just, I know it's a finesse minor point, something to think about for future, whether you want to dive into that or not. This is one of those, one of those funky little items.
I'm wondering if we can revisit the, uh, geography a little bit and you were alluding to one of the reasons that the, that, um, National Life was in, is, was included in maybe the Western Corridor. But yeah, it's a, it's a huge, I mean, the, that's a, it's a huge property. It's a huge single parcel that is the National Life. And then it's interesting to think about the other parcels that are right along the roadway, which are State of Vermont and Green Mountain Power and the City of Montpelier, which is the high school.
Yeah, um, so.
I'm actually going to go to a different map that's got the full parcel map since we're going to get into detail.
So, yeah, the, um, so on the one, on the one side, um, I'll mention also that, um, Congress for New Urbanism, CNU and AARP. Um, one of their recommendations, they reviewed our regulations a few years ago. One of the regula- reg- recommendations were expand the design review overlay and use that as a basis to eliminate density requirements. Because as long as you have good design, density doesn't matter. And our regulations, they felt were very good design review regulations and therefore they could be used to substitute any density regulation. So we've had this conversation before. Do we want to have these density? Now, we've kind of increased it to six. But.
Um, we actually put that exclusion in. There's no residential density limits in the design review overlay district.
For making it bigger, though. What's Congress for New Urbanism wanted was to basically start to expand our design review regulations throughout the city. And then eliminate the density requirement throughout the city. Cause as long as we have good design, we don't need to have the density requirement. So just putting that on the table as, as that was a comment that was made. The requirements here really kind of are built out. And I think sometimes we've got, we forget, we look back. Um, I don't know exactly when the interstate was built through, but you know, sometimes these guys are talking about making changes in the nineteen eighties. And at that time, people living there in the, the seventies and eighties, when these designer view regulations were put in and then expanded were reflecting a, a change in the fact that the interstate highway was built through in late sixties, early seventies. So it's, you know, from a nineteen eighties perspective fairly recently. So they're like, wow, this just come in, our, everything is changing. Maybe we need to protect this corridor up near the interstate. And, um, so there's kind of that, that thought. Um, because they didn't protect Route Two back to Middlesex on the other side of the river. It was just really that interstate exchange. Um, I think things are different now and it may be a little bit of these are all in big parcels, they're all owned by corporate, they're not, we're, you know, getting to your question, could it, could we remove them? It's a policy question. Yeah, I think we could. Because I think we have a lot of other rules in effect, but it, it's again, it's a, it's a policy decision. As to how much or how little. And again, it could stay there and not make a difference because they're not developing anyway, so.
Right. And I just, I'll just say, it was five, six years ago. We had the big, we had the big maps. At some point, we, we visited this question. Five or six years ago, we, we had big maps, we lay them out, and we were kind of taped them up. And we, we spoke and we discussed that very issue. And if I remember correctly, we sort of came, the decision we came to was very low risk that anything was going to happen in that parcel. So keep it in just in case something, you know, significant happens there. We just, and we just thought it was such a low risk kind of proposition that sure, uh, we, we kept it in. Um, but we ultimately sort of fell back on, it's always been there. Yeah, so why rock the boat?
Yep, I think that's fair.
So I think my computer died. So, so you know.
Okay, thank you.
Been acting funny, but I can't do anything at this.
All right, meeting's over. My computer is done.
If there's any, if she's got to look for anyone, if there's anybody on Zoom or
I don't
So I can't see anybody anymore.
Um, but to your point, Tim, I, I agree. I think it's worth taking a look at sort of just the, the overall maps and what the geography is, because I, I, I agree. I think it's worth revisiting it every once in a while. Like I said, it's been five or six years since we've done that and um, there's obviously been a, a number of changes in the city since then, so. Is there anybody, anything else anybody wants to discuss with respect to, uh, consideration of any changes, uh, to this chapter? And obviously we can revisit this at another, at a later meeting, but I just wanted to check to see if anybody has any burning questions. Or, or comments. Oh, yeah, please do, please do. And I, and I just wanted to say, I just want to be, before, uh, we end this, I just want to say, thank you very much, everybody. He was here, um, tonight. It's been really helpful to have this sort of resource and, and I'll warn you right now, don't be surprised if we reach back out to you at a later date to sort of ask some follow-up questions as we really take a deeper dive into this chapter. But again, I just want to thank you very much um, for all the work and dedication you've had in this area. It's, it's been really instructive for us as we're taking a new look at this, so thanks again.
I just wanted to make a comment about expanding the area that design review covers. Um, I think it's really important. I, I'd like to see it personally, I'd like to see it expanded into the corridors into the city. Because that is, that is our first impressions of the city from each area coming into Elm Street, coming down Northfield Street, coming off the interstate, all of those. I think it's important because of the way that it, it establishes our flavor. And, um, that's just my comment. I do need to leave, but I wanted to say that before I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, unless there's, sounds like there's, we're, we're set with this issue for tonight. Thank you very much. Uh, there's one more sort of substantive issue on the agenda, that's ethics training.
This is, should be really short, uh, under the new state laws that went through, uh, the committees. Certain committees are required to go through and do the online ethics training. And I have been negligent in pushing you guys on it as we were going through the final city plan updates, and then I forgot about it, so shame on me. But knowing that we're starting a new cycle, October first is our new year with the new members. Um, I think we're going to have a seventh member showing up next week, so that'll get us back to full, because we do have an applicant. And so, um, with that, we just wanted to go through and remind everybody that you need to do the ethics training and then let us know when you've done it. So we can get it marked down just so that way, if somebody does make some complaint at some point, we've got the ability to go through and demonstrate that we have asked you to do the training. Doesn't take long. Pretty straightforward.
You can actually speed up the set standards of them talking to you. Um, and the quizzes are, there's quizzes you have to do, really easy. Um, and when you sign in, you can put in either Mike's or my email address to get a copy of the confirmation that you get so that you don't then have to do anything. And I'm actually keeping track of this for all the committees that the planning department doesn't putting together a chart. So, because it's do it once and then it's again every three years thereafter. About how long is it?
The website says forty-five minutes.
Yeah, you can speed that up. You can speed that up. I mean, does, if you actually listen to the whole thing, I also had somebody whose video froze and timed out and she just went ahead and answered all the quiz questions and got them all right. So that was it.
Great. So we'll touch base and check in with folks later on. But we wanted to ask everybody to start thinking about it. And if you get a few minutes to kind of take some time and get that taken care of. And that's it.
Great. Thanks. Thanks again, everybody for showing up. Really appreciate it. Last issue on, item on the agenda is adjournment.
I will motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any nays? You adjournment, has it?